Stevens. Coral Brennan next.
The first time I took the test, I failed. The second time I took it, I was in the top 3%. When I failed it, the computer told, the computer told me I could not read. And I believed it and went home and told my mom I could not read. My mom says tests are important to see what we have learned. But if I cannot see what I missed, how can I learn? Thank you.
Don't break the rules.
Ms. Brennan.
Okay, yes, this is the child who missed three questions to go to the bathroom. She wanted to speak tonight. She wrote her own script. Our children spent a minimum of 60 hours last year on mandated non-informative tests. We spent 5.25 million on testing needs last year, per your records. That number doesn't include teacher pay for administering these exams. If we use 60 hours per teacher and first-year teacher salary, we come up with an additional expense of $6 million to administer tests and not teach my child. Our district paid $11.25 million and got around $2 million back, a deficit of $9.25 million. This does not include the unnecessary remediation of our A.V. students who score poorly, the students who are wrongly held back adding year or years to their academic completion, or the $7.1 million spent on hardware to test. I hear you, Mrs. Dozier. The world-class education, the time to act is now and become the model using evidence-based scientific methods of teaching now. Our taxpayers are paying for inaccurate, spirit-killing tests. Let's instead pay to teach our children. I ask you to vote to eliminate the non-informative and duplicative tests.
Thank you, Ms. Brennan. David Stokes.
I come to you as a parent with a combined 35 years of my children going to Lee County public schools, and I want to tell you that you have good public school teachers in Lee County and an excellent system. Also, with that said, I'd like to say I remember when my kids were in elementary school, they're now in high school, and they'd start teaching the test in August because the teachers were required to. They finally take the test in May. What kind of learning, there wasn't a lot, there wasn't, there wasn't room for the learning that young man was speaking about the Cold War. That's, that's what's important. Let's trust our teachers. I ask you to have the courage tonight for Lee County to lead the way in this country, to be the first county to opt out of high-stakes testing. Lead the way, have the courage. Let, let Tallahassee, let the governor, dare he turn down our, our funding. I dare them to turn down our funding as parents. I pay taxes in this county, I pay taxes in this state, and this nation, and Washington, DC, Tallahassee, Bill Gates, and Barack Obama did not tell us how to do things in Lee County. I ask you to have the courage to pass a resolution on this tonight.
I think we're getting the message with the, with the hands.
Ms. Quackenbush.
Wow, I'm Chris Quackenbush. We applaud you, and we're so proud of our board members for bringing this question up. It was hard to do, and we want to support you in stopping high-stakes redundant testing or any test which does not directly help the student or teacher to identify and guide their individual progress. The rest is wasted time. There are hundreds and hundreds of high-stakes tests on our list this year. I have a thick page, a, a thick folio full of them. Most are not to help the children learn, we've heard, as results arrive long after school ends, but they're only used in obsessive and destructive drive to micromanage the classroom. The state has said these new tests are so experimental, it's unfair to use them to judge the teachers, schools, and districts this year. But they plan to use our, our children as guinea pigs and apply lifelong-changing, life-changing consequences for our children. This is irresponsible. In our data-driven society, we've forgotten our mission has nothing to do with data. Our district says it's to ensure that each student achieves his or her highest potential.
Thank you, Ms. Quackenbush, your time is up. Matt Worley.
I understand that you guys are worried about losing funding, but not only do you have the overwhelming support of the people to do away with, with these tests, but it's not very often that a local school board has the chance to change the face of a nation. If you guys have the courage to stand up and do this, you will cause a chain reaction that goes all the way across this country, not only killing high-stake testing, but ultimately killing Common Core itself.
Speakers 11 through 15 are Kevin Regal, Keith Flock, Tara Jenner, Kathleen Jasper, and Joseph Saracena. Mr. Stevens. Pastor Stevens.
It's a daunting responsibility as school board members to hear the potential problems of supposedly violating the law. But I want to remind you that you took an oath to the constitutions of the state of Florida and the United States, and those constitutions are higher than legislation or regulation that the state might pass. We understand you sometimes feel squeezed between citizens and the legislature in Tallahassee, but this is a clear opportunity for you to stand up lawfully and legally, following the rule of law, supporting the Constitution, and saying to them they are overreaching in their expectations of you and our students. I hope you will not act out of fear tonight, a fear of what might happen, but out of courage based upon what you see are possibilities that are positive for our children and how you can represent us and send a message to the people that need to hear it. In this election year, the people in Tallahassee will hear your voice, and if you ever wanted them to listen to local people and local school boards, this is your opportunity. I admonish you, seize the day.
Kevin Regal.
Okay, thank you. I have two quick things. First thing, there are students standing on a bus going to and from a sterile high school. This has been going on for two weeks. This is a safety issue. Fix this problem now. They're not getting calls back. Number two, I want to talk about the, the Dave LaRosa, David Burns situation over at Fort Myers High School. Unless I'm wrong, I have some information that David Burns is the nephew of Dave LaRosa, and his certification expired two months ago. In the news, I hear that he's talking about hiring the baseball coach the last couple of weeks. His, his certification's been expired for a couple of months. How is this possible? If this is true, why is a uncle hiring a nephew? And furthermore, why are we going two months without an athletic director? If this is the case, this nepotism stinks, and it needs to be fixed. On another scenario, why is there favoritism here? No one else would be able to, for a couple of months, go ahead and hold on to their job or have this go on like this. This needs to be fixed and handled, and I'll come back at the next board meeting and see what you do about it. Thank you.
Keith Flock.
Keith Flock, veteran, retired IBM exec, and one of the leaders of Florida Citizens Alliance, which is over 5,000 supporters, 54 grassroots groups, and well over 100 activist leaders, many of here tonight. A recent Gallup poll said that 60% of the, of the, of the folks in this, in the, in the country are opposed to Common Core. We have met with over 40 legislators in the last 45 days. We urge you to opt out and make this first effort to protect our students. I would like to issue you a challenge. I can't give you one because you can't accept it from me, but I urge you to read the story killer. The problem is just, not just opting out of testing, it's the material that's being taught. Read the story killer and then hold town hall meetings with your constituents. Thank you.
Tara Jenner.
Hi, my name is Tara. I'm a concerned parent. I have given my full comments in writing to the secretary. The authority of the government is derived from the consent of the governed. Civil disobedience historically has been an effective means of changing laws and protecting liberties and rights. There are times when law and justice do not coincide, and that to obey the law may be nothing short of an abdication of ethical responsibility. It is my opinion that this time has arisen, and as such, I support the board in opting out of duplicative tests. Doing so will restore local control of public education and will conform with the constitutional mandates on education as dictated by your oaths of office. The tests do not in and of themselves result in constitutional compliance, as they do not directly help our students or teachers identify and guide the students' progress. The tests, however, cost large sums of tax dollars to administer, significantly decrease the number of instructional hours in the school years, negatively impact the education afforded our children, and perpetuate a top-down educational system. We must return control to the local schools and the parents under home rule.
Thank you, Tara. Your time is up. Kathleen Jasper.
All of us here tonight are asking all of you to be educational leaders and not blindly follow bad education policy, whether it's from the state or the federal government. We all talk about how bad these tests are. As an administrator, we used to talk about it in the hallways. This is crazy, we can't keep this up, it's unsustainable, they're failing our kids. Yet we still impose that policy on students and teachers. We're asking you to redefine what success is. Is it one measure, or is it a body of work that a teacher has looked over and assessed with her students? We're not anti-assessment. We want to see formative assessments come back into the classroom and replace the summative assessments that are punitive. And if you decide not to opt out, please do not stand in our way when we say that we are going to be opting out of these tests, that we will be boycotting these tests as, as informed community and exercising our civil disobedience. Do not stand in our way, do not intimidate us, please. We ask you to show educational leadership today and not blindly follow bad policy.
Please hold the comments and the applause. It's making it take a lot longer than it needs to. You have an opportunity to let us know, and I'm getting dizzy watching the fingers go up and down.
Speakers 16 through 20 are Bonnie Canard-Margolin, Elizabeth Pineda, Carrie Constantine, Michael Drykorn, and Sean Hartman. Joseph Saracena.
Last year, we spent about three weeks writing essays every day in my English class instead of learning a new piece of literature. And now, even though I scored a five, which is the highest score you can get on that test, no, second highest score, sorry, I'm still being told I have to take it again along with the other two tests I took last year when they told me that that would be the last test I have to take. Also, I currently have a 2.1 GPA, and I've gotten fours and fives on every single standardized test, so they're not at all related to grades. Thank you.
Bonnie Canard-Margolin.
Dr. Graham, Lee County School Board. For our opportunity to speak tonight, my name is Bonnie Canard-Margolin. I'm a parent and a teacher in Lee County. I wrote my speech because I'm not used to a minute, so. A previous speech caller said, seize the day. I agree. We have waited long for this. We have waited two years. We were here two years ago with the resolution to oppose high-stakes testing, and you all signed it, and you brought it to the state, and you got the state to sign it, and you even got that commissioner that we didn't want to resign, and we appreciate that. We have tried with our representatives, and I see some of them here. It's hard to believe. We've lobbied, we've written, we've written emails, we've called, we tweeted, we've even made memes, no response. I myself traveled to Texas to the network of public education. I was there when Diane Ravitch called for the congressional hearings. We have tried with our Tallahassee, we have tried with DC, and they refuse to listen. So now it is our time to refuse. It is our obligations as parents and caretakers to refuse these toxic tests. There is no more time to wait. We need to become comfortable with being uncomfortable. And we are here tonight to support you because you wanted more than 10 of us, those 10 that have been here so often. We are here tonight to say that this testing is like the Hunger Games, and our kids will not compete.
Elizabeth Pineda. Elizabeth Pineda. Carrie Constantine.
Dear School Board, with high-stakes testing, we are putting unnecessary pressure on very young children. The entire school year centers around passing a 40-question subject-based test, and by teaching to a test, we are taking the fun and spontaneity out of learning. We need standards and units of measurements for schools, teachers, and students, but we need to look at many factors in determining proficiency and progress instead of just one. Please help us jump off this over-testing Common Core or Florida Standards bandwagon and take back control of our school system without a big-profit corporation like Pearson calling the shots and making decisions for our students. We can't control what's happening in Tallahassee, but we have elected our local school board. Let's be an example for other school districts in the state who want to take back education on a local level. I'm trusting you'll do the right thing and opt our children out of high-stakes testing, even if it means some sort of consequence from the state. Enough is enough. Parents don't want these tests, and they're doing more harm than good to our students. Thanks in advance for representing our students and our teachers.
Michael Drykorn.
Good evening, and thank you for your service in our school board. We, you know, as a school board, you find yourselves pretty much at the end of the, the food chain and government. You know, there's the federal mandates, there's the state mandates, and a lot of those are unfunded. And, and a lot of those are the result of bureaucrats making decisions on behalf of the people, unelected officials. What I want to say here this evening is, you've already heard about the qualitative aspects of, of Common Core, high-stakes testing, I don't need to add to that, but what I want to add to that is, is to reinforce that we are your wingmen. You have the courage within you to stand up, to do what's right by the citizens of Lee County, and we will stand behind you to the nth degree. Now, to the root cause of the issue, Common Core and what have you, it's not being legislated down, other than SB 1076 last year. It comes through terms and conditions on a contract, accepting federal money. You're about to talk about an FDA grant this evening. All I ask is that you please read all this fine print that's associated with the federal money. Nothing is for free in this world. Thank you.
Speakers 21 and 22 are Jerry Ware and Larry Tean. Sean Hartman.
The next four words I'm going to say are actually going to shock several people who know me personally. I'll make this quick. My name is Sean. I am autistic. Many people are giving you several different arguments on why standardized testing is bad, but no one is giving you the specific argument on why it's bad for people like me, people with autism. And I thought that because I am autistic, I can give you that very specific argument today, and I can actually give you that argument for several hours. And unfortunately, I have less than a minute right now. The fact of the matter is, autistic people already have problems in school as it is, and it takes them forever to, for them to graduate. It took me forever for me to graduate high school. It took me forever for me to graduate college. You're going to be holding people like me back because of standardized testing, and these people are some of the smartest people on the planet. That's the fact of the matter. Fact, no, just stop. You guys should follow the rules, seriously. The fact of the matter is that you're going to be holding some of the smartest people on the planet back because of these horrible tests. And besides all of the several reasons that these tests are bad, another reason that these are bad is some of the most intelligent people, such as myself, are not going to be able to graduate high school.
Thank you, Mr. Hartman. Your time is up, sir. Dr. Larry Tean.
Mr. Scott, members of the board, it's nice to see all of you again. I'm not going to be speaking two or four. I have, first of all, I have a nephew that's graduated Lee County School System. I have four nieces and nephews in the school system right now. I have two more coming. So we're going to be here for a long time with this school system and directly affected by the decisions you make. I'm glad to see this type of public input. We haven't had it for a long time like this, so it's nice to see people speaking up and addressing their concerns and the things that are important to them. My concern, I'm going to speak to the assessment process. What I'd like to see is that we have an effective, reliable, valid assessment that allows our teachers to have the information they need to speak to what that young man just spoke to, is that we need to be able to guide instruction with it. In the research, there, there are four types of assessment. There are screening assessments, diagnostic assessments, formative assessments, and summative assessments. The two that drive instruction are formative and summative assessments. I know that because I've been intimately involved in that process. We need, if, as we look to what we're going to do, what I'm asking is that we have a thoughtful, effective...
Dr. Tean, your time is up, sir. Thank you. Those are all the cars, Mr. Scott.
Ms. Jacobson.
Hi, my name is Sue Jacobson. I'm a parent of a former, a graduate of Lee County School, I can say. It's been a long time. I've been coming here a long time, since she was in kindergarten at Edison Park. And I've said this before, and I absolutely mean it, I am so glad she graduated last year because these, these tests, and I think we're all confused. I think a big, big problem are the end-of-year tests, a big problem are the CCE tests. They're, they're taking our teachers, they're taking our kids. I'm going to give you an anecdotal story. Every week, my daughter, three times a week, would tell me, I don't have to get up this morning, Mom, just, you know, I can sleep in the first two periods because they're testing. And I go, Anthony, this is impossible, you're not going to be able to graduate, you're going to be tardy. No, 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 they're just turning a blind eye, Mom, and they just put us in the auditorium, and they put us in the gym, and they're retesting. And I didn't get it, and I didn't get it until Kathleen Jasper came up here, or maybe it was listening to her on the radio. I understood clearly they were retesting kids. This did not happen five years ago, this did not happen three years ago. This has crept up on us, and it's got to stop.
Thank you, Ms. Jacobson. Your time's up.
Representative Fitzenhagen.
Thank you very much. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. I'm Heather Fitzenhagen. I represent District 78. I'm your state representative in Tallahassee, and I want to applaud all of you for being here tonight and offering your comments, and I also want to also thank you very much for the hard work that you do on our school board. What I, the very brief message I'd like to say is this: I came here to listen and learn tonight primarily. I am all about bold, out-of-the-box, innovative thinking. That is something that I, I'm very cognizant of, and I think that's the American way. But at the same time, I would caution you that I don't want us to do something without having another plan in place, because education is high stakes, life is high stakes, and life is high stakes. I don't believe that we need to have redundant testing, but I do believe that we need a type of assessment for our children. I don't want my child to have to go through extra testing or anything along that line. So, so please understand me, I think you're missing my point. I think there's a way to find a means to an end that is different than what we're using now.
Thank you, Representative, your time is up, ma'am.
Mr. Fox.
Good night, huh? The real problem is the budget, as we know. Everybody, this school district owes $463 million for schools that it's been billed over the last 10 years using certificates of participation instead of getting the money and paying for them. In interest, this district spent eight, will spend $18 million this year, goes right out the door, goes to nothing but paying interest. Now, I did some math. With that $18 million, at $75,000 a year per teacher, you could hire 240 teachers. Each high school and each middle school could get five additional math teachers, five additional English teachers. That would allow each classroom to have, go from 27 people to 30 down to 20, 21, a much better ratio. Each child and each teacher will have it much better, a lot more personal attention, and that is what will improve grades. And when the English and the math improves, every other class will improve.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. Your time is up, sir.
I can't even read my own writing.
Steve Toiber.
Oh, he did.
Peter.
Simmons.
Simmons, Peter Simmons.
I've got Steve Toiber and Lori Jenkins.
Good evening. I'd like to commend you for the, for the job that you do. It's not an easy job, and certainly a lot of us understand that. So thank you for listening to everybody. Thank you for taking thoughts and considerations in your decision-making process. I'm here this evening representing Congressman Kirk Klaassen. He's sorry that he was not able to be here tonight, but I will bring him this information that I've heard, anything that you want to share that might be written. I will certainly share that with him. I will see him tomorrow. I would encourage all of you, anybody that might hear this, to get in touch with Congressman Klaassen. They can do that a number of different ways. They can visit klaassen.house.gov, C-L-A-W-S-O-N dot house dot gov. They can call the office in Cape Coral, 239-573-5837, or the office in Naples, 239-252-6225. And as Representative Fitzenhagen stated, here to listen and learn. Thank you.
Mr. Toiber.
Thank you, board member Steve Toiber. I'm a parent to a middle schooler here in Lee County. You've heard from the, from the audience, you've got some direction. What I ask that you do now is formulate a plan. Formulate a plan on how we can opt out. Don't just say you're going to, but figure out, you've had some very intelligent people give you some very good ideas. Form the committee, embrace this community. You have people here that spent countless hours doing the research to enable us to do it and do it in a very efficient and straightforward way to allow us to send a message. We can still be the leaders and be the cutting edge and do it in a very precise, dictated way that you can actually lay it out for us and get these people that have given us the plans, and don't stop until we have the attention that we need. Thank you.
Lori Jenkins.
I can tell you that these tests are monetary-driven. My son was in the hospital. He has a terminal heart condition. He was in the hospital, he had had a major cardiac arrest. He was receiving his defibrillator. He was in the hospital, he had been there over two weeks. He was put on hospital homebound, and the school system sent a proctor to the hospital for him to take FCAT. Tell me that is not monetary-driven. It is not student-based driven, because if it was, they would understand. This is a student who holds a 2.5 GPA, is on an IEP, misses over 31 days of school a year because he's surviving. That's what he's doing. He's terminal, he's going to die, but he goes to school. He participates in ROTC. He does the stupid remedial classes. He works a full-time, a part-time job at Publix. He trains other baggers. He works for a Fortune 500 company, and has worked there for two years. And this is a student who is not going to graduate with a diploma because he can't...
Everybody else has been limited to two minutes. We, we said that before you came up here, so that's, we're going to limit it to two minutes. I think we all heard you loud and clear. Ellie Gonzalez. Ellie Gonzalez, please.
Good evening, and I hesitate to follow that, and I applaud her because I can't imagine how difficult that must have been, but I would ask my fellow parents here tonight that let's act like we would want our children to act, and please don't boo me for saying that. I am a mother of two children in Lee County Schools. I could echo everything everyone has said. I just simply want to give you some personal experiences. The word standardized kind of goes against everything that I would think that an exemplary school district would like to be, where we're looking at every child individually, every child is gifted at different things. My children both carry straight As and Bs, yet they both flunk the FCATs every year. From a personal situation, my daughter, three years in middle school, having to take the remedial classes, yet still does not pass the FCAT. What is the point of the remedial class? They're not learning to think. If we're looking for a ways to assessment, we have report cards, we have SATs, we have ACTs, we have very different ways we can assess our students. Lastly, my seventh-grade daughter came home today, today, and said, Mommy, I liked sixth grade, I'm stressed about seventh grade because the tests are going to be harder this year.
Thank you, ma'am. Your time is up.
Ms. Ferrero.
I am here today as a parent and as an eighth-grade middle school teacher.
I am here today as a parent and as an eighth-grade middle school teacher, and what I want to tell you is what I see every single day. I see students who their spark is diminishing. They have lost purpose. Every day, I tell my students, "What is your purpose?", and it is difficult for me to even give them an answer. They are more than statistics. They are more than data. We need to teach our students to think outside the box, and we need to do that. So I ask that you remember our purpose, and that we think about the students, and ask what is their purpose as well. Thank you.
Karen Effron.
I am executive director of the Florida Stop Common Core Coalition. I would like to thank you for considering this very important question. I have heard from many officials in this county and across the state that we can't opt out of testing because we have to follow the law. But my question to you is, which law? The Florida Constitution says the school board shall operate, control, and supervise all free public schools within school districts. State Statute 1008.223 says the schedule must take, for the test, that is, must take into consideration funding, sufficient field and baseline data, access to assessments, instructional alignment, school district readiness to administer the assessments online. None of that is in place. Load testing is also required by statute, and that hasn't been done. There is a prohibition against psychological testing, which is being violated by these tests. And the U.S. Constitution, Amendments 4 to privacy and 10 to states' rights, as well as three federal laws are...
I hate what everyone else has been saying, but I am a parent with five children that have actually been in the Lee County School District. I have one currently that, as she was bringing home homework, and I was doing a lot of research on the Common Core, wondering why so much has changed, and then the standardized testing, I volunteered in the classroom and witnessed a lot of stress going on with the kids and also with the teachers, and it bothered me so much that I not only decided to opt my child out of the testing, but opt my child out of the Lee County School District as well. And I can honestly say that I probably maybe know two people in this room, and yet I've spoken to so many, so many parents who couldn't come here or couldn't be here, but are thinking of a lot of the same decision that I had made. It's like, you know, "Please give a lot of thought to this. It means a lot to us as parents. It's the future of our children." Thank you.
Have I missed anyone?
Tyler.
Oh, I'm sorry. I had her down there, but I thought we'd already had her.
Good evening. My children have attended public schools in Lee County for at least 20 years. My oldest daughter, very intelligent, did very well on the FCAT, no problem. Somehow, she graduated the 2.0, so figure that one out. And my other daughter, who had learning disabilities due to birth complications, I was told in eighth grade that she would not receive a standard diploma. She would receive a certificate of attendance. They said this to me in front of my daughter, who then cried. I looked at her. She wanted to go to a university, and I said, "Is that what you want to do?" She said, "Yes." I took her. I put her in a private school, graduated the top of her class, and went to college. My son now, who was in a private school, and I had to introduce him to public school in fourth grade, he was above average in his reading and math on their standard testing, which is national standardized testing. Now, he's scoring a two on his FCAT, and that's only because I'm sitting at home with him now so he can get the two, because the teachers cannot get through the curriculum.
Thank you, ma'am. Your time is up.
Anybody else I may have missed?
Faith Gansheimer. I don't have any children or grandchildren in school anywhere in the United States. I have a daughter who's a doctor. She didn't have Common Core. Also, the standard for testing and for assessing our children, it's called report cards. They've been around for years, and they have worked for years. And the second thing, not only follow the law, let's follow the money. The $40 for these tests, where does it go? Who gets paid? Who's printing them? Who's paying for them? Who gets the money for the printing of them? Where is the money? Follow the money.
Okay, that's everybody I think I had on my list. Thank you all for your input, and I'm certain that at a later point in this meeting, there may be some comments about where we're headed, but that'll come at the end of the meeting, so you can't run home and watch a ballgame now. You've got to stay in place. We're going to go take now a look at the action items in the agenda under consent. Board members, are there any agenda items you wish to pull for discussion under unfinished business or table items? Ms. Fisher.
I have none this evening.
Were you here at the beginning when we called names?
You called more than the, sir, you called more than the number of hands that were raised at the opportunity to indicate a desire to speak.
Oh, come, come up. You are 30 seconds into your minute.
I have no experience, okay? I have no kids, okay? Okay. I know school, you've got to have standard, okay? But I don't want federal government standard. I don't want Bill Gates standard. I don't want Microsoft standard, okay? I want local and controlled. Listen, now people come here for school, for kids. Hardly can come here to make a time. If after that passed, we have to go to Washington, DC to do that. How can I take off the time? People have kids, they are young people. They don't, they don't have much money to go to waste. The money they all invest on their kids. Listen to them, please. I don't have a kid. I pay everyone of your salary, okay? I even pay for the policeman's salary. Excuse me, sir, okay? Me, Chinese redneck, I say straight. I give me anything. My husband call me goofy. I'm goofy all the time, but I stand up. Me, I graduated from Taiwan, the highest college, okay? Let me tell you, the good things there, good things here.
Thank you, ma'am. Your time is up.
Okay? Thank you.
All right, we're going to go to the consent items on the agenda. Ms. Fisher, do you have any? I think I asked you, and you had none.
I have no pulls.
Mrs. Morgan.
Thank you.
Mr. Armstrong.
No, sir, I have none.
And I have none. Is there a motion to approve the agenda's consent action items?
Ms. Dozier, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Dozier.
I have none.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the agenda's consent action items?
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Ms. Dozier, second by Mr. Armstrong. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0.